Plenars ready to proceed with your testimony?
Yes, Your Honor. Our first witness, I believe, is in a holding room on the Zoom platform, is Tamara Shamburger. She's a Hillsborough County School Board member. And Scott Hyacinth on our team will be presenting her testimony, Your Honor.
Doesn't appear to be anyone in the waiting room.
Well.
Your Honor, I just, I just sent a text to, to Ms. Shamburger to, to instruct her to zoom in, so hopefully she'll be there momentarily. I'd like to ask you, is the audio sufficient from our side?
Sounds good to me, yes.
There's a lot of feedback on my end, but we'll adjust.
Right, Ms. Shamburger's in the waiting room now, so we're gonna go ahead and let her in now.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Ms. Shamburger, go ahead and take your phone off mute there, take your computer off mute. Raise your right hand, please. You swear that everything you testify to today will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, put your hand down.
I'm Ms. Shamburger. Hi, I'm Scott Hyacinth. I'm an attorney for the plaintiffs in this matter. And I would just ask you to state your name again and tell the court your position with Hillsborough County, if you could.
Good morning, my name is Tamara Shamburger. I'm a Hillsborough County School Board member for District 5.
And how long have you served on the school board in Hillsborough County?
I was honored to be elected to this position in 2016, and I look forward to being reelected in November of this year.
And so you were a member of the school board in, in the spring of this year when the coronavirus pandemic began to spread around Florida, is that right?
That is correct.
And can you, can you describe for the court what my recollection is of how the Hillsborough County School District responded in the spring, in March of 2020, when the coronavirus began to spread throughout the community?
Yeah, so we responded just like all other districts in Florida did. You know, when we, the COVID pandemic broke out, we received guidance from the state and the governor that we needed to shut down schools. And we did exactly that. We closed our schools and we immediately went into an emergency virtual situations so we could continue education for our students.
And if I understand your testimony, that was done in response to an order from the state of Florida to, to use online instruction and close the physical schools, is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct. We did close our schools in mid-March based on a directive from the state.
Do you recall how many cases of coronavirus, to the best of your recollection or estimate, were, had been reported in the state of Florida at the time the schools were closed in Hillsborough County?
Yeah, I don't recall exactly the exact number of Corona cases at the time, but I do recall it being just a very, very small number. I recall it just being very proactive and me being happy with that decision so that we could prevent the spread. But I recall it being just a small amount of cases.
And do you recall, what is your understanding of why, why the state of Florida ordered physical schools to be closed down at that time?
Well, for the exact reason I just stated, my understanding, that directive came so that we could be proactive and prevent a continual spread of the coronavirus through our communities. So a very protective and proactive measure.
Can you tell the court how long schools in Hillsborough County were providing instruction online in the, in the spring 2020 semester?
So at the state's request, we did close down our schools and went online about mid-March, and we continued through the end of the school year, which the last day of school was May 29.
And during that time period between March and May 29, was there any communication that you were made aware of from the state of Florida where there was a danger or a threat that the funding to Hillsborough County would be, would be reduced if the school district were to go to online instruction?
No, not at all, not that, not that I'm aware of. You know, we've never had any conversation about funding or reduce of funding or any impact of funding until recently. So the entire time when we were dealing with this emergency and being forced to, you know, send our kids and our staff home, there was never any question about a reduce or reduction in funding at all.
I'd like to, to skip ahead to July of this year, and I'm, I'm gonna show you, put a, put a document up on the screen, if you can see on your screen. Do we need the? Your Honor, at this time, we'd like to, to display and exhibit for the witness. I think to do that, we need you to be able to share the screen with, with my office so we can put this up on display.
All right, hang on just one second, please. I think it's ready to go.
Thank you, Your Honor, let me just briefly. My apologies, I wanna make sure I get the correct exhibit. Is exhibit five, so. Shamburger, can you see this document on your screen?
I can.
Have you seen this document before?
Yes, I have.
Can you tell the court what this document is, as far as you know?
Yeah, so my understanding, this is the executive order that was issued by Commissioner Corcoran regarding the reopening of our schools.
And I'd like to, can we, can we scroll down to section the bottom of page two? So, Ms. Shamburger, I'd like to show you, if you could look at. Can you use this legible enough that you can read it, ma'am?
Yes, I can see it.
Okay. I'd like to, to direct your attention to, under section 1A, do you, do you see that?
I do.
And could you read the, the first sentence of, of section 1A for the court, please?
Yes. "All schools open upon reopening in August, all school boards and charter school governing boards must open brick and mortar schools at least five days per week for all students, subject to advice and orders of the Florida Department of Health, local departments of health, executive order 20-149, and subsequent executive orders."
And what is, what was your understanding as, let me strike that back up a bit. Do you recall the Hillsborough County School Board being, being made aware of this, of this order in July of 2020?
Yeah, and so I just wanna be very clear that I'm here testifying today just based on my own individual recollection. I'm not here to testify on behalf of the entire school board. But as I recall, as an individual board member, we, we did receive this document. And my understanding is that we were required to open brick and mortar five days per week, as I just read.
And I'd like to, I'd like to call your attention to the, to the next sentence, that's just the bottom of this page and, and flips up to the, to the top of page three. And we'll try and scroll for you, but can you, can you read the, the, the second sentence of, of section 1A?
Sure, it says, "Absent these directives, the day-to-day decision to open or close a school must always rest locally with the board or executive, most closely associated with the school, the superintendent or school board, in the case of a district-run school, the charter governing board, in the case of a public charter school, or the private school principal, director, or governing board, in the case of a non-public school."
Thank you. And what was your understanding of what this sentence of the emergency order meant?
So my understanding of that is that the decision to open or close or do whatever we needed to do in the best interest or the greater good of our community rested solely with myself and my fellow board members who were elected to represent the community.
And did, did the school board in Hillsborough County consult with the superintendent and its staff and council about the meaning of this order?
Absolutely.
And is, is what you described today, as far as your understanding of the order, consistent with what the administration told you their understanding of the, of this order was?
Yeah, you know, absolutely. You know, prior to receiving this order, our superintendent had already begun crafting a reopening plan. Now, once we received this order, we then, of course, you know, reconvened and we talked about what was needed. And it's my understanding, as was told to me, is that the plans had to change based on this executive order, where brick and mortar needed to be included in the reopening plan.
Was it your understanding, based on your reading of the emergency order and the, that, that the directive to open school buildings five days a week was optional?
No, that was not, my understanding, the executive order says that schools needed to be reopened, brick and mortar, five days a week.
Now, as a result of this emergency order, what did, what did you in the, in the school board do?
Well, we have to go back to the drawing board. As I mentioned, prior to this executive order, already preparing for the reopening of our schools, our superintendent had done a very good job in crafting a reopening plan, a very comprehensive plan. They gave our families quite a few choices. Upon receipt of this executive order, some of those plans were taken off of the table. And so on July the 23rd, we had a school board meeting where an amended or an altered plan based on the executive order was presented. Ultimately, there was a majority vote to accept the amended plan, with the caveat, though, that we, within our rights, would revisit that plan after seeking and consulting medical experts regarding the reopening of schools.
Can you summarize for the court what that plan was, to the best of your recollection, the July 23 plan approved by the school board?
Yeah, so there was three options for our families to choose. The first option was, of course, brick and mortar, which was in compliance with the executive order. The second option was e-learning, which is our online virtual school system. And then also Hillsborough Virtual, which is full virtual. E-learning, let me just clarify, is kinda school at home, is what I like to call it. So on July 23rd, that was the plan with the contingency that we would revisit that, those options upon receipt of medical advice. That's how that vote went for it on July 23rd.
And do you recall what the, the start date for, for school was in that, in that original plan?
Yes, you know, the original start date of school was August the 10th. In that same July 23rd board meeting, we voted to push back that start date to August the 24th.
And, and I think, I believe you testified that at that meeting, there was a part of the, of the plan was that there's gonna be a, a new meeting with the board on August 6th to, you, you mentioned to, to discuss this with medical experts, is that, is that what you testified to?
Yeah, so that is my understanding. July 23rd, we did vote with that plan, as previously described, with the understanding that on August the 6th, we would reconvene a special called school board meeting so that we can discuss our plan, I mean, the safety of the plan with medical experts who are better equipped to lead us in that decision.
And can you, can you just describe for the court how, how the board came to select the medical experts that were relied upon?
The board did not select those medical experts. Those experts, well, part of the experts were folks that our superintendent was already consulting with regarding the reopening plan. But ultimately, that panel was selected by the superintendent and/or his staff, but it was not, as I understand, but it was not a decision of the school board.
And how many doctors were on the, on this panel, if you, if you recall?
I recall there being seven.
And was the health director of Hillsborough County from the Department of Health among the doctors on that, on that panel?
Yes, Dr. Dennis Holt was on the panel.
What was his name?
Dr. Holt, H-O-L-T.
Is it Douglas Holt?
Oh, Douglas Holt, my apologies.
And so did, did the school board have a meeting on August 6th with, and with the medical panel?
We did, we, we did convene a special called board meeting to meet with the, the seven medical experts solely to get their opinion, I mean, input on our reopening plan and the safety of opening our school building.
Before I, I get to the August 6th board meeting, I wanted to ask you if, if you said the original plan that was, that was approved on, on July 23rd, which was in response to the emergency order, had some different options for, for, for parents. Some could, could have in-person instructions, some could have online instruction. Do you recall how many or what percentage of, of students in Hillsborough County had elected to appear in a brick and mortar schools at that time?
Yeah, as I recall, we did do a declaration intent where our, our families were asked to declare what their intentions were on the return to school. And as it pertains to school choice, which, I don't believe this is a school choice issue, but as it pertains to school choice, about 42% of our families had decided that they would return their students to school. But as it pertains to a safety issue, which I believe is the issue, this is not an, a, a issue of choice, but rather safety, that means 58% of our families did not feel safe in returning our students to brick and mortar.
And, and if you know, 42% or 58%, right, whichever, you know, how many, how many students does that translate to, if you know, in Hillsborough County?
That's roughly, with about 210,000 students or so, that's roughly, you know, 85,000 to 90,000 students.
And can you tell the, the court how many public schools there are in Hillsborough County?
We have approximately 240 schools.
Okay. And I'd like to just skip ahead to the, to the August 6 meeting we were, we were, you referenced before. Can you tell the court what your recollection, your recollection of the, of the presentations from the, from the medical panel at that meeting?
You know, it was a very interesting meeting. It was full of a lot of scientific and medical data. They did very good presentations, talking about community spread and positivity rates and things that certainly that are above the heads of myself, I'll just speak for myself. And so ultimately, they talked about, you know, what would be deemed a, a safe and appropriate number or positivity rate to reopen our school buildings. And ultimately, as you've just mentioned, you know, most of those doctors came back and said, no, that our schools absolutely should not be open. I tell you, I am the board member who directly asked the panel very straightforward and very matter-of-factly, should our buildings be open? Let me just go back and say that I did preface that question with an understanding that this was not a conversation about education. The panel was summoned to speak with us about the safety of being back into our school buildings. Once I asked that question, the
My apologies, I think, I think there might have been an objection from, from counsel, but I didn't hear it, I'm sorry.
My objection was, yeah, the question did not call for this level of hearsay reflecting what other people supposedly said at this meetings, I'd just object on the basis of hearsay.
This testimony is not being offered for the, for the, for the truth of the matter. This testimony is gonna be offered for the effect on, on the listener, specifically the witness, as, as a board member of Hillsborough County, because, because the presentation to the school board is, is, was germane to the, the decision on whether or not, on the, on the amended plan that, that we're about to discuss.
I'll, I'll allow the testimony.
Thank you, Your Honor. Ms. Shamburger, I'm sorry, there, we, we had a interruption in your testimony. But the, the question that was, that you were responding to, and I'd like to get back to, is, is what your understanding of was of the, of the medical presentation and, and from the panel that spoke before the, the, the school board meeting on, on, on August 6th. And to be more specific, you referenced previously that there was a discussion of, I think you referenced positivity rate. And I wanted to ask if you can recall what the testimony to the school board was about the appropriate positivity rate and, and how that was relevant to the decision of reopening schools in Hillsborough County?
My recollection, certainly I'm not a medical expert, my recollection of that conversation from the medical experts is that to safely reopen our school buildings or any of our buildings, that the positivity rate needed to be south of 5%. Based on that information and based on where the positivity rate was at the time, I did ask the experts myself if our school building should be reopened, based on that August 24 reopening date. Six of the seven said no. Well, one, well, I'll say five said no, one said no as of today, possibly on the 24. If the numbers continue to decrease, as you suspected they would, and then there was one abstention.
You said there's an abstention, can you, which of the members of the medical panel abstained from answering the question you asked?
Well, disappointingly, it was Dr. Holt, who is the director of the Hillsborough Department of Health, whom I really was relying on to give us that opinion and advice.
Just so I understand, so you, you, did you directly ask Dr. Holt for a recommendation or, or advice as to whether it was safe to reopen schools in Hillsborough County?
Correct, I asked all seven experts, should our school buildings be reopened, was my exact question. Dr. Holt refused to answer.
He refused to answer? And what was, were you surprised that he didn't answer?
Absolutely surprised, this wasn't somebody that just happened to be in our auditorium. The experts were asked to be there specifically to give us opinion on the reopening of our school buildings. And to not get a response was, was a bit shocking, especially from the director of our Department of Health, whom we work with and whom we must rely on, and whom I must rely on in making the best decision for my community that I represent.
So, as, after listening to the medical testimony at the August 6 meeting, can you describe for the court, you know, what the school board did next that, that night?
Sure, well, based on the overwhelming response from our medical experts, specifically to my question, if school buildings should be reopened and the response being no, our school board, we did take a vote that afternoon. And there was a majority vote that prevailed, that we would delay the reopening plan for four weeks based on that sound and scientific medical advice. That was based on us allowing that positivity rate to go down before putting our students, our staff, and our families into an unsafe situation.
At that board meeting, did you, did you make a proposal for a, a different plan?
Initially, I did make a motion at that board meeting to delay the reopening of our school buildings for nine weeks. One, that was based on, again, the medical expert saying that school buildings should not be open. But also, as a representative of the most marginalized and disenfranchised communities here in Hillsborough County, minimizing disruption is certainly always the best option. And as you know, a semester is nine weeks. I was concerned that reopening our school buildings in even four weeks would create a little bit of a disruption moving our students from home back into our school buildings in the middle of a semester. So initially, I did propose nine weeks as our initial plan to delay school reopening. But ultimately, I did agree with the four weeks based on the medical testimony and advice that was given to us that afternoon.
Did you, when you voted to delay physical instruction for four weeks, did you have a concern yourself for the effect that might have on students with, with special needs and, and students that might have disadvantages in connectivity and things like that? Was that part of your consideration?
I'm always concerned about that. That's a concern every day in education. I'm concerned about those same issues when our students are in our brick and mortar, absent of a pandemic. Equity and access to, to resources are always a concern. It's the reason I decided to run for this position. But knowing, though, what's more important than that is the safety of our students. Listen, having lack of access to the internet pales in comparison to a loss of life. And so I know that being out of the classroom may be a struggle for some, but I have faith and confidence in the amazing teachers we have here in Hillsborough County to get those students back where they need to be. But what they can't restore is a loss of life. And so the lack of a, a laptop or the lack of access to the internet certainly pales in comparison to a loss of life. My vote, my position on this issue is purely about safety.
When, when the school board voted to amend its, its reopening plan on August 6th, was it your understanding, I know you can't speak for the board, was your understanding that, that you were, you had the right or the, the power to amend that plan under the emergency order entered by Commissioner Corcoran on July 6th?
That's exactly my understanding of the situation that we were dealing with. On July 23rd, that was my understanding. And then we move forward on August the 6th with that understanding, which is why the board and myself, now to speak about my vote, which is why I voted to amend that plan that had been submitted to the state. Because I believe as a constitutional officer of the state, as a duly-elected school board member for Hillsborough County, that absolutely was within my authority, I mean, as indicated in the executive order that I received.
And was, were you or the, or the board advised by the school district's council that, that that the amendment you voted on on August 6th was, was within the power of the, of the board under the emergency order?
That's in hearsay again, Your Honor.
I'll allow the testimony.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Yes, that is my understanding. We, I, we did speak with counsel about the executive order, and we moved completely through it in good faith with being in compliance with the executive order. There was never any issues with us believing whether this executive order was lawful or not or unconstitutional or not. We simply wanted to comply while being, while making the best decisions, I did, while making the best decisions for our, the health and the safety of our students, our teachers, our staff, and certainly our community.
Ms. Shamburger, can you tell the court what, what happened after, after the board voted on the, to amend the plan on August 6th?
On August 6th, you know, I left that meeting very happy. I thought we had a reasonable compromise based on sound and scientific medical advice. And we immediately began implementing that plan, or the superintendent did, I guess I should say. But it was shortly thereafter that I really received a surprise when I was told that the state had rejected that plan, a plan that was based on medical advice within that weekend, that we would have to revisit what we needed to do to keep our students safe.
One can, can you put up, I'm gonna put up another exhibit for you to, to, for your review, exhibit 15. Ms. Shamburger, I'm gonna ask you again, can you see this document on your screen?
I can.
Okay. Can you review the document and tell me if you recognize it?
I do recognize this document.
Can you tell the court what it is?
This is a letter that we received from Commissioner Corcoran and the Department of Education, expressing concerns and ultimately rejecting our plan that we, as a board, had voted on, on August the 6th.
And if I can call your attention to the first sentence of the second paragraph, kind of in the middle of the page, do you, do you, do you see that?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the second paragraph?
Yeah, it starts with the words, "This blanket," do you see that?
I do.
Can you, can you just read that aloud for the court?
Sure. "This blanket district-wide decision directly contradicts the district's reopening plan, which was approved because it was consistent with the purpose and framework of emergency order 2020 EO-06."
Now, did you believe that your amended plan on, that it was passed on August 6th by the board was in direct contradiction of the emergency order or your, or the, the district's previous plan?
Absolutely, I did not believe that. And my vote was based on the belief that we absolutely would be in compliance. And I had no reason to believe that the state would reject it.
I'd like to, if we can go to page two, I think. So if you see on page two, there's a list of, and then, on this, I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure I find the right language I wanted to call the witness's attention to. Actually, at the bottom of the, of page two, under the paragraph 6, do you see the paragraph that begins to be consistent with this framework, do you see that?
I do.
Can you, can you read that, that, that first sentence to, to, aloud to the court, please?
"To be consistent with the framework of the emergency order, district school boards and superintendents must roll up their sleeves and go school by school, grade by grade, and classroom by classroom to thoughtfully determine how parents that desire in-person instruction for their children can be accommodated."
Did, at the, at the meeting on August 6th, did anyone on the medical panel recommend? uh, did anyone on the medical panel, uh, recommend that the school district, um, close schools on a classroom-by-classroom basis, or did they recommend that nothing should be, no school should be opened at all?
My, my recollection of that August 6th meeting was that the medical experts, uh, based on the question that I asked them, that no school buildings should be open based on the current data or the metrics.
Do you, do you believe it's even possible to, to, to create a plan, uh, on a school-by-school basis or a classroom-by-classroom basis based on the, uh, data available to the school district about the coronavirus?
No, I, I personally think that's an impossibility, and that's for a myriad of reasons. But the most important is that, you know, unfortunately Corona cases, uh, don't follow district boundaries. Uh, we have, like most districts in Hillsborough County, we have, uh, most of our schools are magnet schools where our students are buzzed from communities around the county. Um, and that's hap, that happens in every school. And so to be able to determine a school-by-school or class-by-class where our schools are so representative of the entire county, uh, I feel like is an impossibility.
Now, in, in this, uh, letter, was, was there any language referring to, uh, funding for the schools if the, if the, uh, August 6th plan were, were implemented by Hillsborough County?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Were you advised of any, uh, is, is there anything in the letter referencing, uh, funding or, or a potential loss of funding, um, if the August 6th plan were implemented by Hillsborough County?
You know, my understanding after we received this letter, and, and I apologize, I can't recall if it's specifically stated in this letter, um, but the main concern was that we would lose funding if we had decided to move forward with a plan that had been, that I had cast my vote for on August the 6th, uh, which was a surprise, um, and very concerning. Again, as I previously testified, a funding had ne, funding had never been an issue uh, when it came to this pandemic or how we were educating our students. And, uh, I was especially surprised that the board, uh, myself had only voted for a four-week respite, uh, to allow the numbers to go down. I mean, if you think about that, that's really only 20 school days, a mere 20 days to ensure safety of our teachers and our students and our family members in our, in our community. Uh, and then when I learned that potentially we would lose $23 million or more in funding, I was completely shocked and surprised. I mean, that's a hit of almost a million dollars per day when you look at a mere 20 days that we were asking, uh, to delay the plan.
You, you, you mentioned the loss of $23 million. Was that, uh, how was it, was that information conveyed to you by the, by the administration of Hillsborough County School District?
Yeah, so once this letter was received from, uh, Commissioner Corcoran, I did speak with our superintendent, Mr. Addison Davis, about, oh, well, what were the plans? How will we navigate this to keep ourselves in compliance, but first and foremost, keeping our students and our staff safe? Um, and then it was brought to the attention that had we decided to keep this four-week plan, that we would in fact, uh, be penalized, $23 million. Children were going to be penalized, $23 million, um, in an already woefully unfunded system. Uh, Hillsborough County school system, just like all districts, are woefully underfunded. And that's something we certainly could not take a hit on. And, uh, so that is a conversation that I had with the superintendent.
Now, can, can, do you, do you recall what the school administration, school district administration did in response to receiving this letter from Mr. Corcoran?
Well, we immediately went back to the drawing board. You know, I really felt like, I felt like as a board member, I was stuck between a rock and a hard place, being, being forced to choose between the life of a student, um, and, and, and funding from the state. I mean, this has become a new, uh, the new pro-choice versus pro-life debate, and it really put us in a, in a hard situation. And so immediately after receiving this, um, I did speak with the superintendent, who, uh, my understanding, immediately in good faith, and as he should have, contacted the Department of Education to try to come up with a reasonable compromise, uh, that would one, keep us financially funded, uh, and two, that would also keep our staff and our students and our families safe, um, wi- without having to return them all to the classroom as, as mandated.
So, so your understanding is that, that the administration, uh, through the superintendent, Mr. Davis, uh, tried to negotiate with Mr. Corcoran about the amended plan?
Yeah, he did. Uh, that is my understanding of my conversation with the superintendent. He did reach out to, I mean, I'm not exactly sure if it was Mr. Corcoran directly or the chancellor's or someone with the Department of Education. But he did, as my, I understand, immediately tried to reach a reasonable compromise that was still ultimately rejected, um, despite our best faith efforts to get something, um, that would be suitable for the community that we serve. Uh, and that's an issue that I have, you know, I was elected to represent this community. I know this community very well. I've lived in this community my entire life, and to have Tallahassee, uh, really strangle my authority and my rights as an elected board member was extremely concerning. And so today we find a community that remains in limbo, um, in hardship and that, in stress, and, uh, being forced to be put back into unsafe, uh, situations. I'm receiving thousands of emails from concerned teachers and families because of where we are today.
Can you, can you tell the court what the current plan for, for Hillsborough's, uh, for Hillsborough County's, uh, school reopening is uh, under the, uh, current arrangement with the, with the state and Commissioner Corcoran?
Well, the last vote that I made, um, as an elected Hillsborough County school board member was to delay the opening on, until, uh, the first four weeks of school. So we would not reopen our school buildings until September the 21st. Um, however, uh, it appears that there has been a decision made to, uh, go against medical advice and reopen our school buildings on August the 31st to be in compliance with the executive order, which again mandates that school buildings be open brick and mortar, uh, in August. So right now, um, against medical advice, uh, we are going to be putting our students and teachers in harm's way.
You said it's August 31st?
Yes, August 31st. Uh, on August the 24th, we will do what's called a smart start. Uh, there will be some online transitioning back, getting our students ready for education. On August the 31st, um, whether it's safe or not, our doors are going to be reopening.
I'd like to show you, uh, another document. Uh, this is exhibit 52. Um, I want to see if you, uh, you can review this document and see if you, uh, recognize it. It's an email, uh, from the, with, from Addison Davis. It says to all H C P S staff. Do you see that?
I see that.
Have you seen this email before?
Yes.
Is, is this the email that, through which, uh, the, uh, school board and school administration was, uh, informed of the, uh, new start date agreed to between, uh, Hillsborough County and, uh, the, the Department of Education?
Well, I can only testify that I did receive this email as well. And so I assume that based on who, to whom this email is addressed to, that this is how, uh, the superintendent decided to notify his staff.
And, um, I, I might have to go back to the page one, one, I'm sorry. There's just some language I wanted to point out to you, uh, Ms. Schamberger. Oh, maybe it's, maybe it is on page two, my apologies. If, if you, I, I, I like if you can read the, the middle paragraph, um, Ms. Schamberger.
Sure. It says, "I submitted two different phased-in models that would have delayed our brick and mortar opening while ensuring our most vulnerable student populations were served in a face-to-face capacity. Additionally, F L D O E rejected both plans and were only amenable to a full-scale reopening of schools per the emergency order."
I'd like to call your attention to, to what's the, the label, proposed, proposal one denied. Do you, do you see that?
I do see it.
Is, is your understanding that this is one of the proposals that Mr., uh, the superintendent made to the state of Florida that was rejected? Is that?
Based on receipt of this particular email, that is my understanding.
And, and does this plan describe a, uh, just if you could look at, at phase one and phase two under proposal number one, um, if you could just, uh, read those for the court, if you could?
I'm sorry, which part do you want me to read?
Under the first, uh, yellow line of phase one and phase two of the, uh, proposal number one.
Okay. All right. So it says, "Phase one implementation date, August 24th. All students will begin e-learning. Phase two implementation date, August 31st. Continue phase one as well as open targeted schools for the following student populations for whom the parents would like face-to-face instruction. Specialized learning centers, homeless students, and migrant students."
If you could also, uh, read the next phase three and, and, for the court?
"Phase three implementation date, September 7th. Continue with phase two as well as open targeted schools for the following student populations and for whom the parents would like face-to-face instruction. Transformation Network schools, F L D O E lowest 300 elementary schools. Phase four implementation, uh, September 14th with an asterisk. Continue phase two and three as well as open all schools for students for whom the parents would like face-to-face instruction."
So, um, just to be clear, this, this proposal, as far as you know, was, was, has not been adopted by Hillsborough County, and this is not the plan that's going to be going forward in Hillsborough County, is that correct?
That is my understanding.
If we could also look at phase, uh, at, at, uh, number two? Wait, I, I see the page flips there. Um, could you read, uh, for the court, phase one, phase two, and phase three of, uh, of, uh, the second option?
Sure. "Phase one implementation, August 24th. All students will begin e-learning. Phase two beginning August 31st. Continue phase one as well as open all schools for the following student populations and for whom the parents would like face-to-face instruction. F L D O E lowest 300 elementary school, homeless students, migrant students, specialized learning center, and the Transformation Network. Phase three, September 7th implementation. Opens, open all schools for all student populations whom the parents would like face-to-face instruction."
And, uh, again, is it, you're understanding that this, uh, that this proposal here is not the proposal that is, uh, being adopted by Hillsborough County, uh, in, in, uh, opening schools this month?
That is my personal understanding.
And if, if you know, I, I don't know if you, if you do, uh, can you describe for the court what, that there's a reference to F L D O E lowest 300 elementary schools? Do you see that?
I do.
Can you, if, if you know, can you tell the court what that means?
My understanding, that's the Florida Department of Education's list of the lowest 300 elementary schools. Unfortunately, we do have schools here in Hillsborough County, specifically schools in my district, uh, that are on that list of lowest 300s. These are our highest need schools. And so that's my understanding of what that refers to.
Understood. Thank you. And do you know if the, uh, if, uh, this, the Hillsborough, if the superintendent, uh, had, uh, any medical advice, uh, that he was relying on, if you know, uh, you know, reaching an agreement to open schools on August 31st?
Um, you know, not that I'm aware. I certainly cannot speak, um, uh, and I'm not here today to speak on behalf of what the superintendent's understanding is. Um, however, based on our conversations with the medical experts and my conversations with the superintendent, um, about our reopening plan after receiving the letter from the state, is that it was not based on any new medical, um, advice. Uh, nothing had changed from that August 6th, um, board meeting in terms of the medical opinions.
Thank you, Ms. Schamberger. I, I have no further questions, Your Honor.
And before we move on there, uh, Mr. Hyson, do you wish to offer plaintiff's exhibits five, 15 and 52 into evidence?
I would, Your Honor.
The objection?
Oh, Your Honor.
Okay, plaintiff's five, 15, and 52 are admitted. Okay, cross.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Uh, Ms. Schamberger, I'm, I'm, yes, David Wells, representing the, uh, state defendants in this case. Thank you for taking the time here today. Um, can we pull up the emergency order, Nate, please? Bearwell, this is going to take up a couple of minutes to pull up some of these documents and go back to them. There we go. Okay, Ms. Schamberger, this is the emergency order that you looked at a little while ago, e- exhibit number 10. And I believe you told us you read it when it came out?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and in the whereas clause, is the second one, "Whereas education is critical to the success of the state, to an individual, and extended school closures can impede educational access of students, impact families' well-being, and limit many parents and guardians from returning to work." You don't disagree with that statement, do you?
No, absolutely, I do not. Uh, education is critical, especially to this, the constituents that I represent. Uh, so I, I don't disagree with that statement.
And you would agree also that in the next paragraph, "Your schools are not just the site of academic learning. They provide many services to students that are critical to the well-being of students and families, such as nutrition, socialization, counseling, and extracurricular activities." And that's definitely a concern for your constituents in Hillsborough County, isn't it?
Yeah, I do agree with that as well, that those things are critical. But I think it's also important to qualify that those things can happen and are critical when the environment is safe. And unfortunately, we can't provide our students right now with that, uh, particular environment because it's simply not safe for them.
Understand. You don't disagree that those are policies that should be pursued to try to make the schools open. You disagree with the timing based on your understanding of what these doctors told you.
I do agree with that statement, um, absolutely.
Okay. And so if you were the one to make this policy decision based on the data, you would say, I believe you testified, open at the end of the first nine weeks.
I'm sorry, you repeat your question.
If, if you were the one who got to decide when Hillsborough County went back to school, I believe you told us that it would be at the end of the first nine weeks, because that's a logical breaking point.
Well, that was my recommendation. If that decision was solely based upon me, uh, it would be whatever timeline is deemed, um, safe for our students to return, whether it's four weeks, nine weeks, or, or 90 months. Uh, I think it has to be based on sound and scientific medical advice.
Understand. I'm just getting back to what your proposal was, what you thought was the right thing after your meeting. Based on the information you had, you said do it at the end of the nine weeks. Am I right?
You are correct. Based on the information I had at the time, my recommendation also to minimize disruption of our most vulnerable students was a recommendation for at least nine weeks.
Understood. And now the, prior to this emergency order coming, let me just back up, strike. Your superintendent began planning for what to do in the 2020, 2021 school year, actually even before school was done from the prior semester, didn't he?
I, I don't recall the exact timeline of when he began his, uh, work regarding a reopening plan. But I believe, my understanding, our superintendent was very proactive, uh, in crafting, uh, a, a really good reopening plan for our, our students.
Okay, sorry, my bouncing around here a little bit. Okay, and you, the superintendent has a staff and he works with that staff to try to put these plans together?
That is my understanding.
And ultimately, when those plans are put together, it's brought before the school board for a discussion and a vote?
That is correct.
And there are seven members on your school board, or there were during this period of time?
That is correct.
And the, the votes for the plans were never unanimous, were they, at least this year?
That is correct.
Am I correct that the first one was five to two? And then there was a vote on whether to go ahead and open up the schools. What was the vote there?
So let me just make sure I'm understanding and answering correctly. The first vote to reopen, including brick and mortar, was five to two. Um, I was one of the dissenting votes because, uh, I didn't believe it was safe to include brick and mortar, uh, in any reopening plans. Ultimately, um, on August the 6th, our second vote, uh, I did, uh, I was on the prevailing side of that vote, which was also, I believe, five to two, which included a four-week delay in implementing the prior plan.
Has there been any votes since then?
There has not.
Okay. Thank you. So they're all five to two. The only difference is whether you were on the five side or the two side.
That is correct. The, the votes did flip a little bit.
Thank you. Now, in your job as a school board member and it being prepared to assess the plan that your superintendent was providing, did you review the, um, PowerPoint that had been provided by the Department of Education? did you review the, um, PowerPoint that had been provided by the Department of Education on reopening and the CARES Act?
Um, I believe, I do recall seeing a webinar, I'm not exactly sure if that is a specific, specific one, uh, that you're referring to, uh, but I do recall reviewing a PowerPoint through the Florida School Boards Association.
Okay, and do you recall the, the PowerPoint provided guidance on what the schools should be thinking about, or the school boards should be thinking about in terms of safety measures?
I recall the PowerPoint, um, and the executive order all really focusing on school choice, not so much safety, um, and mandating that our schools just be reopened five days a week, which has been the crux of, uh, what we've been trying to accomplish. Uh, so I disagree in that, uh, my recollection, recollection of, uh, the PowerPoint from the Department of Education focusing on safety.
Well, let me bring up, to be fair to you, let me bring up the, the PowerPoint, what exhibit is that? Exhibit Number Two, Defense Exhibit Number Two. Okay, um, so we brought up Exhibit Number Two, Ms. Schomberger, which is called the Reopening Florida Schools and the CARES Act. Does this look familiar to you?
Um, no, this one does not. I remember a different PowerPoint.
Okay, well, Mr. Hill, can you turn to the pages, I'll thank you, please? Let me bring up a, a few pages, just to ask you if you had the opportunity, Key to See. This is Part Two of the PowerPoint. It begins on Page Thirty-Five and goes on for, for many, many pages. It's called Guidance for Reopening Healthy Learning Environments. Do you recall having seen this or looked at this in terms of evaluating your school's plans for reopening?
Um, once again, unfortunately, I don't recall seeing this particular PowerPoint. Um, I did review another one, but this particular page, I, I don't recall.
So, best of your recollection, you didn't see the materials that had been provided by the Florida Department of Education to guide schools on reopening in a healthy learning environment?
Well, it, those documents were not provided to me directly. They may have been provided to the superintendent, whom we rely on to, uh, follow these guidelines and present the accurate information to the board. Um, outside of what the superintendent may have provided me personally, uh, certainly there's been information through, uh, like the Florida School Boards Association, to which I'm a member, um, has provided some information as well. Uh, but this particular PowerPoint was not sent to me personally.
Fair enough. It's, it's fair to say that, as a school board member, you rely upon the superintendent to, to be informed, to use all of the guidance and information available to come up with the best plan possible.
Absolutely, I would, I would agree that that's our expectation, or at least my expectation as a, as a school board member.
All right, and under the plan that was put together by your superintendent for your review, there were options provided to parents for different, uh, what you call it, learning environments.
Correct.
Okay, one of the options is to have your child in school the way most of us grew up, being there face-to-face, am I right?
That was one of the options provided to our families, was, uh, the brick and mortar option, just being back in traditional, in a traditional classroom.
And another option was that you, student would not be in the classroom, but he would, or she would actually be getting education from his teacher over the computer.
That is correct, that is what we call e-learning.
E-learning, and then does Hillsborough have, like so many other counties, an actual virtual school?
We do have Hillsborough Virtual School.
So that'd be a third option that parents can choose from to attend school through the fully virtual school.
Yeah, that is correct, those are the choices for parents. Uh, teachers, however, lacked, uh, some of those choices.
We're focusing now on the options that were provided to the parents, and you'd agree it was to have your child there face-to-face, to have your child in the classroom but from home over the computer, and to have your child in the virtual school. Those were the choices.
Yes, sir, I agree.
And then information was sent out to the parents to in- inquire what choice they wanted to make.
Yeah, that is correct. Our superintendent did send out what is called a Declaration of Intent, where we asked our families to declare what their intentions were, uh, upon reopening of our school buildings. Uh, as previously testified, we know that, uh, more than half decided not to return their children to the classroom, but about forty-two percent, uh, had made that, uh, request. Now, let me be very clear that that Declaration of Intent was sent prior to our meeting with the medical experts. I have personally asked our superintendent to reopen that Declaration of Intent so that our families can make a more informed decision, uh, based on the newly available information. To date, that has not been done. So the information, uh, the forty-two percent that have decided, uh, I personally have heard from families who've requested to change their, um, intent, uh, and, and so that may, so the information right now, I would just say, is, is potentially inaccurate.
So, your recollections, forty-two percent chose, and there may be some who, as time has passed by, decided not to go with the in-person option.
Well, that is correct. Again, the Declaration of Intent was done, uh, before our meeting with the medical experts. Our families to date have not been given an option to reassess.
I understand, you told me, though, that some have indicated that they do not wish to be in person, correct?
I have heard personally from a good number of Black constituents, uh, who have indicated that they desire to change their, from brick and mortar to e-learning. And inevitably, there may be parents who'd like to do the opposite. Uh, they just have not been given the option at this point.
And that is going to be their option. They, parents are going to decide whether their children are there or they're in the computer class.
Well, if this is an issue of parent choice, I agree. The problem is, this is not-
And if you could just answer my question. Uh, we've, we heard that already. My question is, do the parents have the choice, am I right?
The parents, uh, do have a choice, um, at this point, yes.
Okay, thank you. Now, you testified about a, a decision after listening to, um, a group of doctors and others to put off the actual in-face education for a number of weeks, correct?
That's correct.
And then after that, you were shown a, a letter that was written by Richard Corcoran, or at least signed by Richard Corcoran, to Addison Davis, the superintendent, and that's who the superintendent is?
Uh, our superintendent is Mr. Addison Davis.
And Melissa Snively is the chair.
He is our chairperson, yes.
Okay, can we bring up Exhibit Ten? This is a letter, ma'am, I believe you testified you've seen before you came here.
That is correct.
Okay, and if we turn to the second page, Mr. Hill, please. Now, if you can look with me at this, the first full paragraph. Uh, what Mr. Corcoran says is district-wide delays, entire district being put off, if they're not in Phase One, is inconsistent with the emergency order. And he goes on to say, it's day-to-day decisions to open or close a school, but that's a school and not the entire district. You saw that, right?
Yes.
And then he goes on to say, if you're going to have a district-wide delay, if you think as a school board that there should be a district-wide delay, he's asking for information behind that, what you've done to make that determination. You see that in the numbered paragraphs one through six.
I do see that.
Okay, for example, you're asked what student capacities are at a school, the number of students requested in-person instruction, and additional information that would, you know, help those involved to understand whether it truly makes sense to close down the entire district as opposed to something else. And you saw that.
I see that in this letter, yes.
And do you know whether your superintendent was charged to go back and, and pull together this information and provide it back to the Department of Education to say, look, here, here's what we've looked at, here's what we've tried to do, and it just doesn't work?
Well, once again, I can't testify to the superintendent's understanding is of this letter, or what he was tasked to do by the Department of Education. Uh, in terms of this letter, I can say, though, that, uh, my vote on August the sixth was, uh, based on the information previously provided. This information you just discussed was not a part of what I voted on or considered when making my vote, because it had never been presented prior to that time.
Okay, and so this is given back to the superintendent to follow up on, and I believe you testified that he did have discussions with someone at the, the Department of Education to try to answer these questions and move forward. Is that correct?
So, my understanding is that the superintendent, after receiving this letter, did attempt to, uh, reach a compromise with the state.
Okay, and you were shown, uh, an email that dealt with a portion of that. I, I'd like to bring up defendant Exhibit Twenty-Two, Twenty-One, Mr. Hill, which is that same email chain, but including the response from the Senior Chancellor for the Florida Department of Education. So if you can, you can see that it's the same email chain, ma'am, but i- in the middle, there's actually the response here from, I want you to scroll down, Mr. Hill, so she can see that, keep going. Uh, Eric Hall, Doctor of Education, Senior Chancellor of Florida Department of Education. Have you seen this before? This portion of-
I do recall, I do, I apologize. I, I do recall seeing this, no.
And you, Mr. Hyson was asking you about the proposals and what was accepted and what was rejected. Do you agree with me that the third sentence, last sentence of Paragraph Two, says, "If you wish to proceed with either of the proposals, the ones that you went through in terms of the DOE schools and the like, a school-by-school analysis required with an amended plan is outlined in the August seventh letter from the Commissioner." Do you see that?
I do see that there.
Do, do you know whether the superintendent ha- has ever done that, ever re-engaged with the department to provide that information and, um, seek modification of the plan to make the changes that you were proposing?
Well, so once again, I cannot testify to what the superintendent's understanding or what his actions were in regards to this letter. However, uh, again, the superintendent did attempt to reach a compromise with the state. This was new information presented to us after we had submitted an amended plan. So, it, it, there was a, a wrench thrown in the plan. We were forced to now, um, on the drop of a dime, pivot and try to come up with something new that we were never told we had to do prior to this letter.
Thank you. Um, so to answer my question, you don't know what the superintendent has done in response to Mr. Hall's request?
I know the superintendent, uh, did, again, attempt to compromise, uh, with the state, um, one, keeping the safety of our teachers and our students and our community safe first. I mean, also complying with the, uh, the will and the desire and the vote of his school board.
Okay, I'll try one more time with my question. Do you know, after he received from Mr. Hall, you've testified about the negotiations. We've looked at it in the earlier email. I'm asking you, do you know what happened, if anything, after Mr. Hall requested the additional information?
Well, my response is the same. It's my understanding, the superintendent did reach out to the Department of Education, to whom he spoke with. He would need to testify to that, um, and he did attempt to reach a compromise after receiving this letter.
Okay, and do you know what has happened right there?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
I should strike that, I changed my mind on the question. Thank you. Um, give me just a, a minute here. I don't have any further questions, Your Honor.
Any redirect?
Uh, yes, Your Honor, uh, I'll try to keep it brief. We can go back to, uh, Exhibit Fifteen. Ms. Schomberger, uh, Mr. Wells has just asked you about, uh, this is a copy of the August seventh letter from Mr. Corcoran of the Hillsborough County School District. Um, why don't you just go up a little bit? Um, at the top of the page, I believe Mr. Wells asked you about, uh, the, the first full paragraph, in the first sentence of the first paragraph, it says district-wide delays, do you see that?
Yeah.
Uh, referencing, uh, Phase One, saying it's inconsistent with the emergency order, do you see that?
I do see that, yes.
Do you recall any reference to a Phase One in the emergency order from Mr. Corcoran on July sixth?
No, not at all.
Mr. Wells also asked you about a, a PowerPoint presentation, um, from the Department of Education. Uh, I believe, uh, the way it was described was that it provided some safety guidance to, uh, uh, public school districts for how to reopen, or, or, safety guidance for, for, for schools. Do you recall that?
Yes.
Did any medical expert ever advise, uh, you at the, at the, uh, and the Hillsborough County School Board that, um, that there's any guidance from the state that would make it safe to reopen schools irrespective of the community spread at the time?
Repeat your question.
Yeah, my, my apologies, this is, is, when you had the medical experts testifying before, for, before the school board on August sixth, did, did anybody testify that, uh, if certain guidelines from the state were followed as to, uh, maintaining safety within a classroom or a school building, um, that, that following those guidelines by themselves would be sufficiently safe uh, to reopen schools irrespective of the positivity rate or the community spread of the virus at the time the schools were opened?
Correct, leading, Your Honor.
I'll allow the question.
My, my understanding of the testimony from the medical experts that it was simply unsafe to open our school buildings or buildings for anyone, um, at that time, based on the current metrics. We were highly encouraged to rely on the metrics, to rely on medical advice when reopening our schools. Based on that information, the vote took place, which is why we requested a delay of a mere twenty school days before opening our school buildings.
Thank you, I, I said, I, I'd like you to, uh, call your attention back to the August seventh letter. My apologies, I, I, there's one additional, uh, issue I want to discuss you from this letter. Um, if you go to, to Page Three. So, I'd like you to, to, if you can read for the court, uh, this, uh, this paragraph here on the top of Page Three of the August letter from Mr. Corcoran.
For, uh, your district has options going forward. First, you can follow your approved plan. Second, you can submit an amended plan, consistent with the guidance in this letter by August fourteenth, twenty twenty. Third, you can withdraw your plan and proceed under the existing statutory framework.
Was it, thank you for doing that. Is it your understanding based on, uh, do you recall reading this language, like, when, when you, uh, when the school district originally received this letter on August seventh?
I'm sorry, you said, do I recall reading this, uh, can you repeat the question?
Yeah, yes, do you recall seeing this, this portion of the letter when, when it was received by the school district on August, uh, seventh, I believe?
Yes, I do recall reading this portion of the letter, the entire letter was received by the school district.
And and from this language, what was your understanding of what Mr. Corcoran, uh, wanted from the school district, uh, in this letter?
Well, quite simply, my interpretation was it was going to be his way or no way, and that he was rejecting our plan, uh, despite our reasons and authority to make the plan that had been resubmitted, and that, uh, we were now given a whole new entirely set of, uh, circumstances or, um, uh, things that we needed to do in order to be in compliance. This was now a, a whole new set of things that we needed to comply with.
Thank you, Ms. Schomberger, I, I have no further questions, Your Honor.